All right, so I'll call the zoning board appeals meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes for October 14th and November 18th, 2021. So why don't we take them each separately? October 14th first.
Who's voting?
On the October 14th ones?
Yeah, we have to watch out on these return ones. The rescheduled ones. We have to look up to see who was there.
The October 14th, I was there, Rick was there, Dave was there, and you were there.
So all good?
Yep.
I move that we approve the October 14th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. It's unanimous. And on the November 18th, Rick was there, Dave was there, Bob was there, and Rich was there. I was not there, so.
Motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2021.
Motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. Next is a request for a six-month extension. We had granted this back on May 18th. It was a side yard variance, and I guess she hasn't been able to get a contractor, so she's looking to it because otherwise the variance is coming.
Okay. Okay. Do we approve this? We did approve this?
Yes, we approved it back on.
It was a one-year variance.
But she, I don't think, I think she's getting nervous that she might.
Oh, okay, I understand, yep. Can you speak about this?
No, I'm not sure if she's here or not. Oh, you are, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, do you mind going up to the?
Oh, okay.
Just in case there's any questions here. Just your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Rosalie Gregoli, and I'm at 93 Oak Street. What else do I have to?
Just explain.
Yeah, so I've been trying to find contractors, and one got sick, and then try to, it just is what it is right now. So that's why I'm getting kind of nervous that after all the work of the variance, that I might not be able to, that it will expire.
Okay. Any questions? Give a motion.
I move that we approve her request for a six-month extension on her variance.
At 93 Oak Street.
Can we make it bigger? Can we make it more than?
She's requested six months.
You can only do six months under the statute.
Thank you.
But thank you for the generosity.
Just try to make it easy for you. It's tough times.
Yeah, it is. It really is.
Second.
A second. Any discussion?
Second.
If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is discussion of potential zoning bylaw addition of battery energy storage. I think maybe we should hold that till the end. I'll take a couple of more out of order. The 701 and 702 continued hearings, I guess. The last meeting, I think you guys voted these, but it was later in the evening or somehow. Marion was reviewing the tape, and she thought maybe we should just should tighten it up and...
Yeah, I think eventually they drew their petitions without prejudice.
With a prejudice. I think there was one that was not a vote, maybe not taken or whatever. They did put their paperwork in, but I think we should just take a vote to allow them to withdraw without prejudice, so. On the 216 Peregrine Road application. Somebody want to make a motion on that one? He's put his pick, as I said, he put his pick work into to request it, but I thought it would be good idea to say.
Tighten that petition.
Yep, have a motion on. Somebody want to make a motion?
We're looking for it. It's right here, page. Page three of the packet. Oh, it's in the back? No, right here. Right, page one, page two, page three.
Third page, yes.
Oh, there it is. All right, here it is, in a second.
Yep.
You want to do it? So what we're doing here is first?
Just allowing him to withdraw without prejudice.
And then what, reconsider the new filing, right?
When he brings it back.
Okay, it hasn't been brought back?
No, no. This is just a take of a, to kind of formalize what happened last meeting.
Okay. So I move that we approve the withdrawal of petition of David Cologne, 216 Peregrine Road, Abington, for a special permit under 175-32-I to create an in-law apartment inside variance under 175-29, 216 Peregrine Road. The property is located on Assessors Map 18, Lot 77, in our 30s.
And that would be to withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah, to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Is there a second?
And what reason was that for? Why do you have to withdraw?
He did last time, but there wasn't a formal vote taken, I guess, when Marion was reviewing what happened here last time. He was here last time, and you guys talked about it, and he withdrew it, but it was never actually voted on.
I'm trying to think of which one was that? Was that the one with the, we wanted to see, we wanted to see the drawings?
Um, it was the in-law. He didn't include the titles, so it didn't get advertised.
Oh, okay, all right. It wasn't, all right, very good. It wasn't advertised correctly, that's what it was, okay.
So is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And then we have the 75 miles at the same time.
And that's, we did, we did do it at the end.
Yeah, but she thought.
She wants to put it, okay.
That was the next page.
That was it?
It's the next page, yeah.
Okay.
Rich, you can do it.
Withdrawal without prejudice, 75 Nile Street, Abington, for front setback variance under 175-29 for construction of a 28-by-28 barn, 8.2 feet from the front property line at 75 Miles Street.
That's a motion to let them withdraw without prejudice. And is there a second?
Second.
Second. Again, it's you three who vote.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
And those who voted too?
Yeah, those are the only two.
Okay, because the other one, I think I did say withdrawal of prejudice.
Yep. So now we can go back to the original agenda. Brockton Avenue Realty Trust, 380 Brockton Avenue. I'm going to withdraw, step aside from this one because I have relatives who have got properties, so Rick is going to run this meeting.
Yeah, okay.
This portion of the meeting.
This is a continued hearing, and it's with regard to the petition of Brockton Avenue Realty Trust, 5 Oak Street in Holbrook for a special permit under 175-21-3 for a proposed four-unit residential building at 380 Brockton Avenue. The property is located on Assessors Map 15, Lot 138, in the HC Zone. Does anyone hear from Brockton Avenue Realty Trust?
All right. All right. How you doing? Austin Chardy with McKenzie Engineering Group, here on behalf of Brockton Ave Realty Trust at 380 Brockton Ave, which is shown here. So we filed a special permit with regards to basically residential use within the Highway Commercial District. This is a continued hearing. I did present the project last time, but since then, we've gone to planning board and conservation. The Conservation Commission approved it and issued an order of conditions back in October, and on Monday night, planning board approved it as well. That's essentially, you know, the summary of the project. I'm happy to present more of it or answer any questions. So I'll leave it at that.
Is there any questions from, actually, I should say?
From us.
From us first and then?
Yeah, we had some questions before. I think it was with Conservation and the planning board, from what we remember. They were okay with how you're going to build this so close to the wetlands?
Yeah, so it is, they issued an order of conditions, basically one foot offset from the wetland line to limit of work. It is fully compliant with the regulations. It's just, it is close to it, and as part of that order, so back in 2005, a very similar project was approved on this site, essentially the same exact project, and as part of that work, they were actually filling some wetlands. So as a measure of good faith, they're going to do that work. It's on the property behind, but so they're still going to do that work, restore the wetlands out back. It's basically a restoration of some wetlands that weren't fully completed as part of the original order. But yeah, so they issued an order of conditions. It's a one-foot limit of work. We're proposing a retaining wall about two feet off the wetland line. That will have a, essentially a guardrail along the top of it, essentially to act as a buffer to prevent any creep into the wetlands once people are living there.
So again, you're leaving all this wetlands back here. You're not touching any of the back there?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, as part of the work that's proposed, there's no, no wetlands will be disturbed, but the previous projects disturbed them, and there was some earthwork that was done out there. So essentially, they just are going to do that work as part of this order. So we closed out the old order and created a new order.
And you're going to be hooked up to sewerage, correct? No septic?
Correct. Yep, it'll be a sewer connection, so that'll have to go through DPW. And Route 123 is a DOT road jurisdictional, so we'll have to file for access permit and utility permits through Mastodot as well.
And how many units?
It's going to be four units.
Do you get any questions?
I don't know why they're here. What zone are they in? Do we know? What zoning district are you in?
Highway Commercial. So it's just a special permit for use. It's fully compliant with the zoning bylaws in terms of parking, site coverage, setbacks. So it's just a special permit for use, essentially.
Is there any issue with the water access?
In terms of getting?
Getting water from the town?
Getting the water. That's still, we still have to go through that process. I know there's been some issue with, you know.
Connections right now.
And I'll let new people connect and stuff. So the applicant is aware of that. I'm not sure if it was approved, so it's grandfathered in at some point in time, but we still have to go through all that.
But the, one of the comments from, that we received was that they recommend the applicant address the issue with the water department, so I'm just noting that that would be a condition on anything we do anyhow, so.
Yep, it would be. And then the sewer connection as well, we'll have to go through.
Okay. As long as you're aware of that.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions. Do you have any more for us at the moment?
No, that's it.
Okay, anyone else from the audience like to speak on this topic or project? If not, we'll close the discussion from the public, and any discussion on?
It says here the planning board. You already went to the planning board, right?
Yeah, on Monday night, they voted, and it did get passed, four to one.
My, if we do approve it, those two things that have to go along with it, which is the sewer and the water connected, has to be buried also as part of the?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Agreement to the process, if we do go forward with it.
Okay.
What I do find, though, and I'm just going to say this out of my own opinion, is that it's a shame that it's not being used for what it's supposed to be for business. You know, it's a shame that we can't have businesses in that, that area instead of, you know, more apartments or condos.
Right, right.
But you are, you know, you're making a good project there, I can see it. You're going by all the boards, and you're leaving the area freed up. It's a shame it's not a business of.
Yeah, it's, the site's really constrained in terms of the wetlands in the back, and you can, you can see the envelope.
I can see where it would be tough to, it could be tough to build anything, a business in there if they want to put something, you know, large in there, a store or something.
Right, right.
It's one of those, one of those pieces of land that is kind of awkward, and you can only get so much into it. Doesn't look like you're overbearing it, that's for sure.
Right, exactly. I think it's going to, it'll fit in with the, you know, the, you know, all the existing buildings out there, and it does, there is a sidewalk on our side of the road, so it'll connect to that.
Do you know where the fire agent might be? General area?
It's a good question. I think it, no, off the top of my head.
Has the fire department seen this project?
I don't believe they've fully reviewed it. I'm not sure if they looked at it as part of the planning board.
Well, it does seem like they would be able to get in there if they had to, so.
It's right next to what? Portofino's, right?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah, Portofino's, right next door here.
I mean, again, it's a, it's a tight piece of property, and it's not overbearing it that much. It's probably difficult for a store to get in there.
Right.
Business. I just hate to see all this land go into apartments and condos. But Amy, you got anything?
I don't.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right, so. Any further discussion from the board? No. I'm good.
Hill and motion.
I was looking for the.
Could be the second page here on that packet.
Okay.
This is the other system, the second one, it's just that there are offices at Oak Street in Holbrook, and then it's 438.
Is this it? Okay. Is this it?
Yep.
It doesn't say 380 Brockton Ave.
No, it does not say 380 Brockton Ave.
It's the second clock, so it's the second.
See the end?
It's the second clock, so it's the second page. You should go.
Okay. It just doesn't, oh, there isn't a second part of it, so.
This is definitely the right one. I just want to make sure, because it doesn't have the address on it.
Yeah. On the motion for approval, a motion to approve petition of Brockton Avenue Realty Trust, 5 Oak Street, Holbrook, for a special permit under 175-21-3 for proposed four-unit residential building at 380 Brockton Avenue. The proposed location is on Assessors Map 15, Lot 138, in the HC Zone, with two other conditions, which is the approval of the water and sewer. Commission is to be seen by this, along with the fire department. A second. Okay.
You save a second.
A second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Name, option carries.
Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I apologize, you're right. It was right there.
Can you get him?
Yep. So we get back to work right away.
So this was a continued hearing, but it's, Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 14th, 2021, at 7:05 PM at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenowitz Way, Abington, on the petition of EMK Trust, Robert Matthews Trustee, PO Box 2257, Abington, for a special permit under 175-35 for construction of a single-family home within floodplain in Wetlands Protection District and waiver of environmental impact statement at Dorsey Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 51, Lot 24, 25, 34, and 35, in the R30 Zone, and Reberbine Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals. And again, this was continued to tonight. And is there someone here to speak for the petitioner?
Does the board actually advise plans in the report that was?
Yes.
We have this together.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Kyle Gaddy, representing EMK Trust, Robert Matthews Trustee. We had a previous meeting for the construction of a single-family home within the Town of Abington floodplain district. And at that hearing, we did ask for a waiver of the environmental impact statement. Someone made a motion, one of the members made a motion, asked if we would do an environmental impact statement. So based on that, we did an environmental impact statement based on the impact with respect to drainage, sewage, groundwater, surface water pollution as required in the Abington Bylaw Section 175-35G3. I don't know how much of this.
Keep going. You're doing a good job.
Thank you. I've explained the existing conditions, which is the property is 42,000 square feet of land, lies on the northerly side of Dorsey Street, consisted of four lots shown on a plan owned by Alan Stone, April 13th, 1951. The property has remained undeveloped since that time, and has been owned by the Kelly family, now EMK Trust, for almost 40 years. Recently, the development of a 38-lot subdivision, Century Estates, provided construction, constructed a roadway that allowed access to our locus, which is this area in the green, at Dorsey Street, you have Dorsey Street Extension, Cynthia Road, that goes back up to Murphy Street. This, this road was developed so they could access the 38 lots. Then, when the new roadway passed, it provided frontage and access for the Kelly lot. The subject property and abutting Century Estates subdivision lots and all the house lots along Crowe Street do not lie within a FEMA flood zone. The site contains mostly wooded oak pine within the upland buildable area and shrub vines, sedge grasses within the wetland portion of the lot. The existing topography slopes from southeastward direction at 188.7 to the low spot on the lot at 181.5. So the general slope direction is from the northwest corner to the Alpha Pipe on Dorsey Street. The proposed conditions, the construction of a two-story, single-family home driveway, underground utilities, water, sewer, electric, which will tie into existing utilities on Dorsey Street. All construction will take place within the upland portion of the lot, approximately 10,400 square feet, which is this area there. The remaining 32,000 square feet will remain in its natural condition. The proposed grading will not alter existing drainage patterns. Top of the foundation will be at elevation 193, and the garage slab at 189.5. Finished grading around the house will be at elevation 189.5, and sloped southerly towards the roadway at elevation 187, and easterly towards the wetlands that drains through an outlet pipe in an indirect elevation of 181.6. This lot, as designed, was approved by the Abington Conservation Commission under DEP File SE84-546 with both standard and special conditions. Drainage, as stated, this lot will not alter existing drainage patterns. The dwelling footprint contains 1,512 square feet, which is 3% of the total lot coverage. Stormwater from the roof area will be directed by roof leaders to a drywall system at the rear of the house, so the gutters will wrap around the house. It'll discharge into a drywall system. This has been added since the original design. This was not on, when I, on the original plan. So we've added that. Loming and seating of the lawn areas will be sloped at 1 to 10, which allows for infiltration of surface water. As previously mentioned, the Conservation Commission reviewed this and issued conditions, ensuring safeguards for nearby wetlands. The planting of lawns, together with the applicant's proposal to install roof drains connected to a drywall, will result in a net decrease in the amount of controlled stormwater runoff from the property as it currently exists. Sewerage on this property, the dwelling will be connected to the municipal sewer system by utilizing the existing sewer connection stub at this property. The proposed single-family home will not overload or generate any negative effect on the town's municipal sewer system. Basically, under Title V, a house would be 110 gallons per bedroom. A three-bedroom house would generate 330 gallons per day, so it's a very minimal amount. Groundwater, the plan calls for the use of the drywall system to infiltrate good-quality stormwater runoff from uncontaminated roof runoff. The drywall recharge groundwater in compliance with DEP's stormwater management standards. The roof drains and drywall reduce uncontrolled stormwater runoff. Basically, under DEP's rules for single-family home and the type of soils that are in this area, recharge, stormwater management is really exempt. We've added it, but it's not required under any DEP or conservation issues. The proposed house water surface pollution in wetlands, the proposed house driveway and lawns will be constructed, will not be constructed with any wetland area in accordance with the wetland protection laws, because construction of a new dwelling will be located within 100 feet of a bordering vegetated wetland. The applicant filed a notice of intent with the Abington Conservation Commission. Approved this project after finding that groundwater supply, storm damage prevention, flood control issues were appropriately addressed in accordance with requirements of Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Submitted with the plans show the drive, design of a drywall and erosion-controlled barrier. Water, the dwelling will be connected to the Abington Rockland Joint Waterworks System. The new house will contain many water-saving devices which reduce water usage are now required in construction, including water-efficient showerheads, toilets, and faucets. This lot already has a service connection in place in the joint waterworks. Previously approved this house connection to the municipal water system prior to the enactment of the current water moratorium. Wildlife habitat, according to the most recent Massachusetts National Heritage Atlas, 14th Edition, August 1st, 2017, the site is not mapped within any priority estimated habitat. Edition, August 1st, 2017, the site is not mapped within any priority estimated habitat for rare wildlife species, and there are no vernal pools on the site. Summary, based on the requirements, the proposed use of the single-family residence is allowed by town zoning bylaws. The lots, frontage, lot area surpass and exceed zoning bylaws' minimum lot requirements. The proposed construction of the house within the town's local floodplain and wetlands protection overlay will not alter any wetlands, and the submitted plans clearly meet and exceed all performance standards required by section 175-35, and thus, the approval or request for a special permit is one. We did include in our impact statement diagrams of the drywall standard, the wildlife habitat, FEMA flood map, the habitat map, the Abington zoning overlay district, which appears to encompass probably 50% of the town of Abington, which was created back in 1973 or '74, I believe, which was prior to the wetlands, current Wetlands Protection Act, prior to D E P wetland maps, and prior to town of Abington FEMA maps. Not sure how reliable it is. Building we're in tonight is in the town of Abington floodplain, as is the library, as is the new high school. It's an area that encompasses quite a bit of Abington, and it was basically constructed in the, drawn in the 1970s because of the developments by Mr. Trina and Dirty Blanchard when they put in a couple hundred lot subdivisions. So I think that map at some point, the zoning board should think about redoing that with current information that's available. And there were additional lots that abut this also in the town floodplain. The Draper Butters lot, one next to that, across the street, behind it, so there were 13 lots within this subdivision that were in the floodplain. There were two additional lots on the other end of Chamberlain that were also in the FEMA flood zone, never approved by the board. Be glad to answer any questions the Board may have.
Any questions for Mr. Goffe?
No, but we need to decide who's voting for us?
Yes, we do.
Yes, because I.
Well, Bob was not here when we had the original hearing, so it'll be the three of us.
Okay. Because I was.
You were here.
I was not a voting member at that.
No, no, but that's fine. Any questions for Mr. Goffe?
I don't think so. Amy?
I do.
You do? Okay.
Can I? May I?
You may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Amy Questle, Town Council. So why does your, why does your application include four lots?
Because it goes back to the old, the old 1951 plan. I mean, that's what's.
So it includes four lots?
Pardon me?
It includes four lots?
Yes. But technically, under, if you got, I mean, technically, under zoning, there are only roughly 7,000 square foot lots. No, there wouldn't be 10,000 square foot lots.
Are those the four lots?
Both, just in the green, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah. And there were also two of the lots over here and two over there.
But your plan only shows, only shows two lots, right?
No, it's showing.
I don't see four, I only see two, right?
No, it's, it's lots 68, 69, 81.
No, no, I'm right here, you have Chamberlain Road, you only have one lot, right? You don't have, you don't have a line going this way, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm considering this as one lot, it's uncommon ownership.
So, so how do you include Chamberlain in there? Because did you, is there some kind of title search that shows that none of these lots right here have the rights to pass and repass over Chamberlain?
They have. They take, yeah.
That's, that was kind of why I.
Excuse me, could you here tonight? I'm Attorney James Timmins. My office is in Quincy, it's T I M M I N S, and the applicant asked me to come tonight and event a questions, and Chamberlain was one of the potential issues. There's a recorded plan in 1951, and it's called tentative plan Randolph Street. The plan is found, to the extent you'd care to look at it after the fact, in Plan Book 8, page 511. And was, what's interesting about the plan when you review it is that it shows the lot layout that's depicted, of course, close to what's depicted here. And it shows ways, but none of the ways are identified. So the plan in 51, it's, it's entitled a tentative plan, and it shows ways without any names, and it appears that they were not relied on because there is a Chamberlain Street, or Chamberlain Street, and it's further down. It's not where it's depicted here. So what's going on is there are two plan, two lots here, two lots here. Those are the four lots you were talking about. And it's 2-2, 2-2, and the whole lot is being developed as one in order to meet the minimum lot size. Chamberlain, we regard to be completely abandoned because there is, A, it's not on a recorded plan. So there was never a recorded plan that has Chamberlain Way. This came after the fact, and Chamberlain Way is actually further down this direction. And there are lots back here, but when you get to the end of what might be Chamberlain Way, Chamberlain depicted here, there's a home that blocks it off. So there's no easement rights, as you're talking about. Under the law of private way, there would be easement rights if this way was shown on a recorded plan, but it's not.
But you're showing it as a paper street, and you're showing it as, it says in the plan, 4-2, 2-2, 4 square feet includes the fee in the roadway. So how much is the square footage of the roadway? Because in the Sears case, you can't include the paper street in your lot area. So you're, I think you're over, but are you over enough?
I. We're in the equity zone.
Okay, okay.
But technically, if we only owned one lot, and we have 50-foot of frontage and 5,000 square feet, we would have a buildable lot. But he owns, he has other lots that are attached to it, so that, that doesn't count because he owns a budding land.
Yeah, but you're using, you're using, you're using Chamberlain Street for wetland and everything, so it's.
Well, we're not, we're not.
So that argument is not, is not really valid.
We're not doing anything to Chamberlain Street, absolutely nothing. We're not, we're only.
But you're considering it part of your land because it says includes fee in the roadway.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Under Land Court instructions, we would have a piece of this on the line of the road, so others having the rights to pass and repass over.
So we should get the square footage of Chamberlain to get the proper lot size? Just, we should just get that, but it's not that big of a deal. So it's 266 times whatever this would be. I'm sure you could do it right now.
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have a rule, but I'm sure you could.
Can you get that for us?
So, yes, there was, there was that, and then.
Well, it does, I mean, technically owns the fee under land.
The Conservation Commission did issue an order of conditions, I heard.
So Mr. Goffe says.
And you had stated that the, in your, in your environmental impact statement, you said that the property was lower than, which property? Because is it this property down here? Is it lower, you said it was lower than a property, is it this one that's about?
Correct, yeah.
But, and these are developed, is it lower than these or higher than these?
Yeah.
So does the whole thing slope down that way?
Correct, everything, yeah. Everything, and everything drains out of an outlet pipe here when they, when they did this subdivision.
So there's no threat because you're above these, and you're, these are in the floodplain also?
Yes.
But because there's an outlet, there's no threat of increased ground?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, that was it, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody in the, the audience have any questions? If not, we'll bring it back to the table. I just asked.
Do you want to get that information?
Yeah, do you have that squ, oh, you do have a question? Okay, I'm sorry. Name and address, please.
Mike Santos, Wausau, 190 Cynthia Road. I was running, actually, probably a question directed at the board. The, the area that the applicant is looking to build in is a designated drainage area for the lots between the new Cynthia, Cynthia Road, Century Estate lots, and the houses on Crossley Street. It's a designated drainage, water drainage area that is, and last time I was here, myself and some of my neighbors spoke about this, but we have significant water problems on all of the properties on Cynthia, and certainly the properties on Crossley that were impacted from the building of Century Estates. We have a designated water drainage space that runs straight down, it's essentially on Chamberlain where the, the paper street is. I'm wondering, why are we considering allowing for a property to be built in, in a water drainage spa, area?
What, how do you know it's a designated drainage area?
Because it's on, it's, it's on my house plans, I'm on 190 Cynthia, so I'm, be a budding, I think, essentially, backyard to the south. It's, it's on my house plans, it's a water drainage basin straight through all the way down to Murphy Street.
Mr. Goffe?
Yeah, just that.
Yep.
This is property of the subdivision plans for Century Estates. The easement plan that he's talking about is a drainage basin that's located on the rear of their lines. There's a discharge pipe that runs down the property, that runs down the abutting property to us, dumps into a drain manhole, drainage goes down the street, another detention basin across the street that picks up runoff, also flows in this. This is our lot, has nothing to do with designated drainage, he's not our property. You're saying it's a state?
Just to further clarify.
Mr. Timmins, yeah?
Please. At the beginning of the presentation, this is privately, a privately owned lot that's been in the family for 40 years. I did look at some of the work that was done. I saw some recorded covenants of the registry of deeds and agree with what the surveyor just said. I mean, it's kind of axiomatic that you cannot take someone's private land and make it a designated drainage area for another development unless they granted some sort of easement, and they did not, and I'm pointing to the property owners. So this designated drainage runs down into an area abutting this lot, but these lots, the applicant's lots, and the lots that are owned by some other folks who abut this area are not part of any designated drainage area. They couldn't be part of a designated drainage area because no one had the authority, other than the property owner, to agree to that. So the fact is, the water runs down near where they are, but they, they own this lot, they didn't agree to anything, and they're, they're putting a house in that's not going to affect, the gentleman just spoke, his, his property, as has been presented by the engineer.
Anybody else have any comments? No, if, if there's anybody else who hasn't spoken yet, feel free. If not, then I'll let you speak again.
This house, can I get a question?
Yep, please, yep, if, if you want to say something, you need to get up to the podium. Name and address, please.
I live on Crossley Street, 49 Crossley, and this area has been nothing but a water problem.
Your name, your name, ma'am?
I've lived there 30 years.
Hold on a sec, just give us your name, please.
Oh, LeBron.
Mrs. LeBron?
Ian David LeBron.
Thank you.
And it's been a water problem for 30 years. This house they wanted to build, I know the Kellys very well, is being built on wetland. In the first place, when Dorsey Street was built, it should have never extended in to build all these other houses because that land was turned over to build that road on Dorsey Street on wetland. The water coming out from Cynthia Road, new home, Dorsey Street, and Crossley Street cannot handle the drainage. We do not need another house on Dorsey Street.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Excuse me, my name's Scott Cutrow. I live at 171 Dorsey Street. First off, thank you for getting the environmental impact study. We asked you guys to do that, so we appreciate it. There's just been a lot made of Century Estates, the houses that were built there, the plans that they're on, those plots, and I, I don't think that's the question here today. The reality is that those houses are there, they exist, we live in them and deal with the puddles in the backyard regardless of what they were built on. So I admit that most of the conservation stuff goes over my head, but I just ask that when we make the decision on this, we don't take a conservation study that says there's no wildlife there when I can show you videos of the family of deer that sleep there every night, right? And, and I think regardless of the Century Estates development that was built, or the Crossley neighborhood that's been there for centuries, or decades is probably a better term, I just hope that when the decision gets made, it's made in the interest of the concerns of the community, which is rooted in what's going to happen with the water, right? And to me, I've only lived in Abington since 2018, but I picked that neighborhood to build my house there because it seemed awesome. And the one big flaw with the neighborhood is water. So I'm not an engineer or anything, I don't get how all this stuff works, but my only red flag with this one situation is that water is going to go into my basement. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse over it, but I just hope that we're keeping focus on what is the question of hand, which is what is the impact of building this house? And not, how does the construction of this house compare to stuff that's a done deal and in the past? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Matthews?
Rob Matthews, 40 Cuddysock Road, Falmouth, formerly of Abington, 25 years in Abington. Prior to that, my wife's family's been here for 60 years, she's been here for 60 years. Your Butters have very legitimate concerns. I, I understand where they're coming from, I get that. However, as I said before, we didn't create those concerns. We've been paying tax, we, we didn't create those water problems. They've been there. We've been paying taxes, our family's been paying taxes on this land for 37-plus years. We're just looking to be treated the same way everybody else has been treated. There's, I know you, I know people don't want to hear this, but there's 39 houses in Century Estates. 13 out of 13 were granted this special permit. We have 40,000 square feet, a little under an acre. Most of the lots up there are a little over 30,000 square feet. So we've got an extra 10,000 square feet, and the road, the road is not going to be 10,000 square feet when you back that out. There's no way that road's going to be 10,000 square feet.
I got 12,000.
I don't know.
I've got 12,000.
Nah, I can't.
You're still, you're still fine. I've got 160 times 80. I mean, I, I have to use calculator, I'm not good at math. I'm going to hit that.
But in any event.
But you're fine, you're still over.
Yeah, in any event, the point I wanted to make is we've got a professional engineer who has determined that, you know, the groundwater is a groundwater, doesn't change. Crossley Street unfortunately has problems with groundwater, there's problems with groundwater. We're not adding any groundwater. You know, the front of the house drains the street to the storm drain, the back of the house, it swings around to the retention area. It's, all the water will be retained on our lot, as the engineer presented. So we've got an engineering report, we've got conservation approval, and we've got the environmental report. I mean, we've, I think we've met the guidelines, we've done our due diligence, and we just want to be treated like everyone else, you know, that's all. So that's all I had to say. Thank you to the board, thank you to everybody.
The square footage, by the way, the square footage of the road is 6,450, it's 40 by 160.
So why do I have 80?
I'm just looking at the map.
Yeah, because you've got 91.
On this map right here, it says.
You've got 91, 80, and 89. I added those, those all, those all equal 261. I took out the flanks, and I came up with 1,200.
You know, yeah, because, because you don't have the curves.
I took those out. I took those out. But those curves aren't that big, I mean, I took the, so.
Well, there's tangents, yeah.
They're not, they, these can't be 20 feet from here to here.
Yes, they are, they are 20. The radius is 20, the tangent is 20.
But that doesn't mean the frontage is 20, it can't be.
No.
From here, this can't be.
No, the width right, the width right here is 40 feet. This, this is 40 feet wide by roughly 160 feet.
So, you're saying that this is 40 feet right here?
Absolutely.
And this is 80 feet right here?
Yeah, because you have two 20-foot tangents, you got 40 plus 20 is 60, plus 20 is 80.
It doesn't look that way to me, but I'm going to believe you because you're an engineer, I'm not.
Either way, there's enough.
There's enough.
Yeah.
Because I calculated it, but I took out those, I took out 800 feet by those, so I came up with 1,200. Can't believe it's 600, but whatever.
Last chance, anybody else out in the audience who wants to say anything? Yes, sir.
I, I, I just, I was wondering if we could know, was the environmental study conducted by an independent third party?
It's conducted.
No, it was done by.
By Mr. Gav.
My office.
All right, so can I conduct an independence, can I conduct my own environmental study and come up with different results?
Well, the other petition is that we asked them to do an environmental impact statement. They have to go out and hire somebody to do it, they've done it. He's, he's, he has to abide by certain guidelines as, as that environmental engineer, so it's not. Anything else? Yes, sir.
I may, sorry, Scott Cottrow, 171 Dorsey Street. I may have misheard, but did earlier, did you say the environmental impact study came of like, conditions or something? Did you make mention of that, or did I make?
I didn't mention the impact statement at all, no.
There are, there are conditions, there is, there are quite a few conditions with the.
Conservation, maybe, is it, maybe you heard it that way?
Probably as far as no increase in bucket, uh, inflow, no change of the drainage pattern. If you look at the special conditions of the, uh, back of the order of conditions, there's probably 25, 30 conditions, cause no increase in water flow, uh, no change in flow, has no plans to be submitted, um, there's quite a bit.
And you can, you can get copies of those, Sarah, those are public records. Okay, is that it from the, uh, out in the audience? All right, so I'm going to bring it back to the board. Do we have any questions?
Any discussion?
No, the order of conditions is attached to the impact statement.
I'm just saying for these, this gentleman here.
Oh, yeah.
If he wants to, if he wants to see it, then, yeah. So, just tell us what our function is here, it's pretty limited, correct, as far as what
Correct, it's a special permit. So, um, you know, you're, you're.
And I think, the way I read the, the bylaw, those, the, the applicants shall be eligible for a special permit if the board finds that the subject land is not in fact subject to seasonal or periodic flooding, and if the proposed development is consistent with the purpose of this bylaw, the board may grant after a public hearing with due notice a special permit for the use of such land.
Yeah.
So, it's, if we find that the, there is no seasonal or periodic flooding, then we can grant the special permit. If not, then obviously we shouldn't grant the special permit. I think based on the impact statement that is produced to us by their engineer.
Just one like that out there.
Yep.
That's how we. I appreciate everyone coming out, though, I can say that right now. This is the way it should be, really. People should really voice their opinion. It's important. Anything?
Do I understand correctly that the, that dry well system was something that's not on the plan we saw before, or is it not on something that was done a while ago?
It was something we added, where we knew there were concerns, we added it. That would take the roof area out of the, um, flow, additional flow that the roof may cause, and we put it into a dry, dry well system, which is usually done on projects with five or more houses or commercial properties you would use it on, with the requirement of the Weapons Protection Act under stormwater management to recharge groundwater. So, that's why we put it, we just added it as an extra maintenance policy, and I actually thought the board would want that.
And, um, just for a side note, this is the reason why when you develop in the wetlands and the wetlands protection area, now we all have water, people are saying they have water. It's a shame that these things were approved and not done correctly, um, when the other projects were done. I mean, this is, this is what we get. Other boards have approved things in the wetlands, in the wetland protection. And, um, you're all evidence of what happens when they do that, so it's just side note, that's all.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Let's, let's close the, the hearing, actually, first. We have a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the hearing's closed now, it's just.
Just us.
We have a motion? Again, if you look, if you look at the bylaw, and as Amy said, we're, our task is somewhat limited here, it's whether or not we think there is going to be seasonal or periodic flooding, if the development is, or if the, uh, the houses are. My opinion, based on the environmental impact statement, I don't think that's going to happen.
And we usually don't ask for that, I mean, that was.
And I'm glad we did, I think that was a good thing to try to give a little comfort to the, uh, the abutters, but.
Adding the dry well also is another mitigating sort of thing here.
Yep.
I moved that the petition of Yenkey Trust, Robert Matthews, trustee, PO Box 2257 Abington, Abington, for a special permit under 17535, for construction of a single-family home within Flood Plain and Wetlands Protection District in waiver of, well.
Not that, yep.
Take that off.
Take that off, yeah.
Property located on Assessor's Map 51 lots 24, 25, 34, and 35 in the Arc 30 Zone, be approved.
Could I just amend it a little bit, just to add in there that, if the board determines that in fact the, uh, the property would not be subject to seasonal or periodic flooding if the proposed development.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Now, that's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it? Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome. I'm reading up on the next one. I've sent a lot of background today.
Yeah, turn on forward, continue, we're still.
I was invited to meet you guys a while, we, uh, we had six inches of water for two days and a cup to our ankles.
And now we have more.
Now we have more.
Okay, next on the agenda is the. Petition of Brian Needle, trustee of NBL, NBL Realty, 267 North Quincy Street. Let me just read the notice. The Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 9th, 2021, at 7:10 PM at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenwitz Way, Abington, on the petition of Brian Needle, trustee of NBL Realty Trust, 28 Adley Drive, Abington, for a special permit under section 175 dash H2 and H5 for open lot storage of landscaping vehicles and trailers and landscaping goods and materials at 267 North Quincy Street, Abington. The property is located on Assessor's Map 34, lot 10 and 11, in the HC Zone. Andrew Burbine, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals. Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Good evening, Mr. Burbine. Am I correct that Mr. Burbine, Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Negrelli are voting members? Or am I wrong? I'm sorry, I shouldn't assume.
Uh, we'll, we'll actually shift it now to Mr. Manning will be the third voting member on this one.
Thank you. Just for the record, my name's attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street in Abington. I'm representing the applicant, NBL Realty Trust. NBL stands for Needle Brothers Landscape, and Brian Needle, one of the principals, is here with us tonight. I think most of you probably, if you're not familiar with Brian, you're probably familiar with Needle Brothers Landscape, because you see the trucks all over the place. Needle Brothers Landscape has been in business for over 25 years. They've been here in Abington, Brian lives in Abington, his brother lives here in Abington, and they presently are up, located up on North Quincy Street in Abington. They've been up there for 16 years, and that's where they park their trucks, trailers, and all of their commercial materials. So, why are we here, then? Because they're not moving? They're going to stay up there. But, um, Mr. Needle has in the past, or Needle Brothers has been renting the property up there on North Quincy Street. And I think the board is probably aware that there were some issues up there with the landowner and some other tenants, which was kind of frustrating for Needle Brothers because, uh, they run a tight business, a clean business, so they wanted to get out of that situation. They looked around in other places in Abington, there wasn't really anything available, so they finally were able, after a lot of negotiating, um, they have now struck a deal where they're going to buy, uh, the land that their business is on. And I submitted a copy of the plan to you to show you that portion of the property, it's lot A that they'll be buying, just over three acres. Needle Brothers Landscaping is already on that property. There's a small portion of some of the stored material that's off property that if the sale is consummated, they would obviously move everything to within the boundaries of the land that they own. There is an existing special permit for that property up there, owned by the property owner, Mr. Semino. But if Mr. Needle or Needle Brothers Landscape buys this lot and becomes the new owner, they need a special permit for the new lot under the new owner's name. So, that's why we're here, to basically ask for the special permit to allow the existing business in Abington to continue to be on that site in Abington. There's no change to the business, there's no change to what's being stored up there. It's just to let Brian and his employees continue to thrive in Abington. Part of the special permit approval process would be to demonstrate that we're not overloading municipal town water or sewer, we're not even connected to town water or sewer, we're not overloading any traffic areas, uh, issues or creating any safety hazards. As I said, we've been up there for over 16 years now without issue. And as you drive by, most people aren't even going to notice the difference because this is obviously an invisible property line. But for the legality of it, in order for him to buy this property and continue operating, the whole purchase is conditioned on the grant of a special permit under his company name for this now new lot. We'd be happy to answer any questions, I'm hoping you'd agree it's rather straightforward, and we hope that you will approve this so Needle Brothers can stay operating at their current location in Abington.
I had a couple of questions. One was with regard to the, the house that said it has a tenant, they wanted to make it office space, if I understood correctly?
I'm sorry, what was your last sentence?
Uh, that they wanted to make that into an office space or office headquarters?
That's potential that after they buy the property and get control of it, we are looking to either renovate that building or take it down and build a new building in someplace. Any sort of commercial construction would require site plan review and a whole new hearing of.
Okay, so that's a separate.
Separate, yeah.
Separate, it was just mentioned on the.
Right, yeah.
Is it on lot A?
Sorry?
Is the house on lot A?
Yeah, it's, it's a small house right up in front of the street.
So, how can it not be connected to water and sewer? You said that they're not even connected.
Although, sorry, Needle Brothers doesn't use any water, we don't, that's not our tenant, that's Mr. Semino's tenant.
But the property is, is hooked up to water and sewer?
That house likely is, I, I, actually, I don't know that it is connected to sewer because.
Okay.
Where it's located, it's on the Brockton, Abington line, there's a Brockton sewer pipe on the Brockton side, but there isn't an Abington sewer pipe. So, I, my guess is that's probably on Septic.
Okay.
Our goal is, after purchase of the property, the, uh, the property, that house would be vacated. But we can't take any action like that unless we're in.
But that house is on the, on lot A, the property that you're trying to purchase?
The portion that we are buying, that whole house out front that kind of dilapidated?
Yeah.
Is on A, yes.
Also related to the issues that occurred up in that area, is any of the stuff that the current owner is obligated to do still undone on that three-year per pascal?
No, Needle Brothers, um, I'm trying to say this politely, it wasn't part of the problem.
I didn't, you know, I wasn't trying to imply.
No, 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 I know, it just.
It was a big mess, and I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to shame anybody who's involved, but deeper back into the.
My, my office has indicated to me that all of the, um, outstanding enforcement orders have been resolved.
They are now, okay.
Yeah, mostly it was deeper into the property.
Right.
But those didn't involve this particular piece of property that Mr. Needle's. Any other questions from the board? Amy?
I have a question. So, if they've been there for 16 years doing this use, why are we here? Why are you here? I missed that.
Because the special permit that is in existence is for Mr. Semino, who owns all of the property now.
Right, but wouldn't they be a pre-existing non-conforming use, or are you saying this zoning's been in place for 16 years?
Yeah, it's been there.
It has?
We want to get a permit under their name, so now he can go to a bank and say, I own it, I have a special permit to operate.
Okay.
We'd like to have a construction loan to do it, whatever it is they plan.
Got it.
So, looking at this, there isn't no neighbors or anything that would be disturbed by?
Right. As I said, really, nothing's really changing. Amesville State Park is on the, right?
Yeah.
He's using this particular property the way it is now.
Yeah.
And he's going to continue.
As I said, in the, there's, there's a small piece of some of his materials that are over the lot line, or be on lot B that he's going to bring onto lot A, but the majority of what's there isn't moving, it's just there. We hope in the future, after we get some financing and all that, you'd see Needle Brothers, you know, maybe have a storage building or something for his materials, you know, something like that, but that's not part of tonight.
Any other questions?
So, lot A is what you're buying?
Correct. Subject, the purchase sale is subject to this special permit.
Any questions from anybody out in the, uh, the audience? Yep.
One of these pieces of paper here, it looks like what lot A is, and then there's another thing out in the back, a tail on the end of it, and this particular one, it just shows, you know, a lot, a lot, kind of a proving lot with, with nothing on the tail end. Is this just one contiguous lot?
You're looking at, this, this is the assessor's plan.
That's the assessor's plan.
Okay, so then, we don't have to worry about that.
Right, yeah.
That's not necessarily.
So, we're concentrating on this, this one here with the.
The lot A.
Lot A, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Um, so do the, um, or does the equipment and the storage of materials on the property, do they change locations? So, is there something where you have a mulch pile and you have to move it, or, or is it always in the same place?
As I just mentioned, there's some materials that are slightly over the lot line that he will move when he becomes owner of this property, but in general, uh, I'm hopefully I.
So, I'm trying to, um, so I'm trying to, it would be nice if the board could condition the special permit on, um, on an occupancy plan that he should, that he just turns into the building department and says, here are the things that I'm going to store here. He can change that, but they, but, you know, as long as daily, he doesn't change the location of certain things, or do it?
No, that'd be a pain for them. It's basically landscaping materials, whether it's, like you said, mulch or gravel.
And then you just park trucks.
Right, the trailers, yeah.
Nothing else, though? This is going to be.
Right, this is Needle Brothers Landscaping. Not, there's, he's not subletting or anything like that, there's no wetlands on this property. It's, what you see is what you get, because he just wants, he wants to own the property, so now he has complete control over the property and is divested from the rest of the property.
Does it, does the current special permit, I don't know if you know this, Sean, does the current special permit have any conditions on it?
No, it's from 2006, well, I shouldn't say.
Do you have a copy of it?
I do, I can get your. I can find it in my.
Do you generally store your materials in the back? And then you park the trucks behind the house in the front, maybe? Because the house is right on the street, right?
Yeah, mo, currently, as it exists today, most of his business is pushed off the road. There isn't really anything up near the road other than the house. Man, bro.
Yep, yep.
That's just, this is just a copy of, I found on the record of the 2006 special permit to allow open lot storage. All right, Kathy. I would envision, I mean, it's no, Brian's plan is to come, he's going to work with an engineer and an architect and come back probably within six months to a year if he can secure the financing for some sort of office or storage building.
How many acres is it?
What he's buying is just over three.
Three seventy.
Did you see that?
No, that's okay. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A point from our billing inspector was the plausibility of setting hours of operation and/or days of work and/or, was any of that responsible for a special permit? Do we have to include that?
You can include conditions such as that on a special permit.
They can. And we would determine those?
Mm-hmm.
No, no such restrictions exist. I mean, basically, obviously landscaping is pretty much daylight hours.
Yeah.
There hasn't been any complaints whatsoever to our knowledge of Needle Brothers Landscaping. It's not a noise generator. They're essentially off-site most of the day.
No question.
Yeah.
They're out in the street. I see their vehicles all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, you definitely do.
So you might see a plow come back at night or leave at night, depending on the time of the storm.
But that operation already exists, right?
Yeah.
It wasn't specifically pulled out here on the old premises.
Yeah, I mean, there's a wave, some companies, so.
Any other questions for the board? Or of the board, I should say? No other questions from out in the audience? All right, so why don't we have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so the hearing's closed. Now, somebody want to make a motion on the petition?
You want to do it, or I'll do it?
You can.
Motion to approve petition by Brian Needle, trustee of NBI Realty Trust, 28 Adelaide Drive, Abington, for a special permit under 175-H Section 2 and H Section 5 for the open lot storage of landscaping vehicles and trailers and landscaping goods and materials at 267 North Quincy Street in Abington. The property is located in Assessors Map 24, Lot 10 and 11, in the HC zone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Upos, I see names.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck. Good luck. Awesome. Good luck.
Seventy-five Dale Street.
Do you want the one from last?
Did you copy them? Thank you. Town of Abington's owner, Board of Appeals, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 9th, 2021, at 7:15 PM at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Rick Montgomery, 37 Orchard Lane, for a variance under Section 175-14 to utilize an existing driveway as a common driveway to allow access to both the existing and proposed dwellings for Seventy-five Dale Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 586364, Lot 14, and 122-127, and 2-3 in the R30 zone. Andrew Burbine, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals. How are you?
Good evening. My name is Paul Baker with Grady Consulting of Kingston, Massachusetts, on behalf of the applicant, Rick Montgomery, of 37 Orchard Lane in Abington. Here tonight, as you mentioned, for variance in accordance with Section 175-14, to use an existing driveway as a common driveway for two proposed lots. The existing site consists of six parcels at Seventy-five Dale Street and Zero Oakland Road. Seventy-five Dale Street is an, has an existing single-family dwelling, as well as an existing gravel driveway that provides access to Dale Street. The adjacent lot is generally, the adjacent lot, which is Zero Oakland Road, is generally wooded. Seventy-five Dale Street is also wooded with wetlands and a flood zone located on it. The remaining parcels are set on the westerly side of Oakland Road, are generally wooded as well. They are generally upland, uplands, with two isolated wetlands that are not a part of the, excuse me, the Schumatus Connet River, which does run through Seventy-five Dale Street and Zero Oakland Road, the first two parcels I mentioned. Under the proposed conditions, the intent is to modify the existing lots at Seventy-five Dale Street and combine the remaining parcels to build a proposed single-family dwelling. The single-family dwelling, we will not utilize any public utilities. It'll have its own well water and on septic. The intent, the proposal is to utilize the existing driveway as a common driveway to allow access to both the existing dwelling and the proposed dwelling. Provided this granted relief will significantly reduce the environmental impacts. The granting relief would eliminate the need to construct a new roadway across a wetland resource, a flood zone, as well as through the town floodplain protection district. Without this variance, a, without the variance, a new driveway or roadway would have to be constructed. That would involve wetland mitigation, wetland filling, flood zone mitigation, as well as the removal of the street, existing mature trees, and adjusting the visual landscape at the front of Dale Street at the beginning of the property as well. The proposed, the two proposed lots meet the required frontage area and setbacks, so there's no issue there to the proposed dwelling through the weather. With that, I can take any questions the board may have.
Mr. Chairman, who's voting on this?
I hope it'll be you, Rick.
Okay, why septic? Would Town of Abington govern a septic, the residents had to pay to, many years ago, to go on storage? Why proposing septic?
The, in order to make the connection to the existing town sewer, that would have, the sewer would have to run through the wetlands to do that. The proposed house is situated approximately 500 to 600 feet back from Dale Street. The, we performed dirt tests. The soil was suitable for septic.
Any other questions?
Just to point out that, just to make sure we understand where the, where the existing house is and.
I can show a couple of examples.
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand it.
So the existing gravel driveways here servicing the existing dwelling at Seventy-five Dale Street, the proposed dwelling would be set back approximately back here as well. This, this significant area is a significant amount of wetlands, as well as flood zone. There is wetlands and flood zone on the existing Seventy-five Dale Street property as well. One thing I forgot to mention is, once upon approval of Lot 1 and Lot 2, both Lot 1 and Lot 2 would be the same owner.
And what would be the, if the variance isn't granted, what would be the solution?
We, we are here at the request of the planning board. We presented an option to provide access to Lot 1 with a driveway prior that would stop short, a driveway in a parking area that would stop short of the wetlands and provide a pedestrian bridge over the intermittent stream. That did require some minor flood zone replication as part of that. They did that solution, at, when we presented that solution, they then requested that we come and ask for variance for a common driveway. They'd rather see the driveway access to both properties, to both milestones that way.
Do you know if the existing driveway conforms to current standards for crossing wetlands in that stream?
Not off the top of my head. That's information I can get to you.
I can say right now, traditionally, we don't, I know this board right here, doesn't allow one driveway for three houses. I mean, that's something we've stuck to for a long period of time.
That's why he's here for a variance.
Right, exactly, but I mean, I can think of two projects that.
All right, I.
Yeah.
What's the cost differential between doing it this way versus doing it the way that you were looking at before the plan, what said come here is about the same?
The, with the pedestrian bridge? The pedestrian bridge was approximately $75,000.
And this isn't going to cost anything, I would imagine, right?
No, because we'd be utilizing existing.
Does it have a culvert, the existing?
It has two existing culverts, yes.
So why didn't you just adjust the lot line to one, to Lot 1, to put it halfway through that and have Lot 2 go halfway through it? And then you'd have driveways on both lots, and you wouldn't need a variance, except I don't know if there might be a driveway setback.
Yeah, it has to be, I believe, 20 feet from the property line.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think there is a setback.
Or 20 feet between driveways and a three-foot setback. I don't believe the existing gravel driveway would be wide enough to service as, to function as two.
But couldn't you widen it because you have culverts already?
Then you're, then, then we're into mitigating, doing wetland, wetland impacts.
You would still need to do that even though you have two culverts?
Yes, because you would have to widen the driveway.
Yeah, but, but you're only, isn't the only wetland the river or the stream, whatever?
No, there's, there's flag wetlands out there that extend beyond the river.
Why can't you, you can't improve Oakland Road and go in that way?
No, no, that gets, that's a paper street.
Yeah.
Private road. There's no access to an existing public driveway with the parcels that the applicant owns.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Amy?
Um.
I'm just going to open it up to the audience and then.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it could be a problem because right now Lot 1 and Lot 2 are going to be owned by the same owner, but they don't, they won't always be.
Right, they won't always.
Right, exactly. That's, that's our theory, too.
So that's the problem that we always have with common driveways. So, I mean, I'm just pointing it out.
Yep.
Can it be included in the deed that Lot 2 shall be the, responsible for the maintenance and care of the existing driveway?
It just causes, down the road, it causes too much problems, I think.
Let's open it up to the floor.
Good evening. I'm Doug Ulwick. I'm at 99 Dale Street. I'm an immediate abouter downstream on the Schumatus Connet River. I have owned my property for, I think, 40 years and have a pretty good sense of what's going on in the neighborhood. Just, I think it's important to understand some background here about this driveway. Back in 1969, when Frank and Gloria Jean Winowitz built their home across the Schumatus Connet, they needed to get to it, so they put in a culvert. Who knows how they figured out the size of it, but what we discovered over the years is it floods. It floods often, particularly in the winter. And parts of it would wash away, the approach, the outfall from it would wash away. Single house, they lived there with their two kids. It wasn't a big deal. They drove through the puddles. About eight years ago, when Frank and Jean got really serious about selling the property, Frank brought in equipment and took the area between Dale Street and the Schumatus Connet to the downstream side of the driveway and cleared it out, leveled it out, all without permits, and planted grass. Looks gorgeous. And he pulled out the one culvert, and he put in two culverts side by side, hoping, apparently, to stop the flooding problem. It did not. I have some documents here. I'd like to share some photographs and some diagrams. Curiously enough, one of them explores the notion proposed by Town Council to expand the driveway. I may pass them on, perhaps. But the first picture shown is after Frank had put in the two culverts, and yet you can see very clearly it did not get rid of the flooding problem.
Can you give one to the petitioner?
Absolutely. Two of that. So anyway, in the first shot, this was taken, I have it labeled, back in January of 2021. And you can see all the fresh gravel here he had put in over the expanded culverts. They failed. The driveway is acting as a dam on the Schumatus Connet River. And when the headwaters above it get too high, it floods. The other offshoot of this is if it floods too much, me, next house downstream with a walkout basement, I've had water within an inch of my basement slab. Also going on here, and I have a letter into the planning board asking them to deal with it, we have a current violation of the town stormwater bylaw in that the applicant has gone ahead without permits and cleared well over an acre of trees and pulled up the root balls, and I am in grave concern for what conditions could happen this winter when we normally have flooding, that I could end up underwater. There are no detention basins, there's no work done. Lest we think that happens only in, in the winter, the next page, I was out of town when this picture was taken and shared with me by several neighbors, 27 October, the river flooded over the driveway. You can actually see the silt sock to either side at the river crossing. So now it's flooding in the fall. This is not a good driveway. It's serving right now one house, and they drive through puddles. The notion that it would serve more than one, I think there are two more buildings shown on the back property in the proposal. I think one's a barn, but it has a three-bedroom septic system designed for it. So the notion that it would get that kind of use, and it's a bad driveway to begin with, and then the notion that at some point in time this bad driveway would be owned by multiple parties is just beyond the pale to me. It's a bad idea, and I would hope that you would deny it. Now, I'm an architect, and I go looking for solutions. Page three is heading in the direction the Town Council mentioned. Again, Frank, the former owner, on the downstream side of the driveway, had cleared out all the wetlands plantings and everything else and planted a lawn. It's now considered upland. A little bit of a stretch, but based upon vegetation, it's considered upland. If one were to, to start at the upstream side, the real, the true untouched wetland side, and extend that driveway 20 feet over onto the hive side, it brings us out to the river crossing with the two culverts. Bad as it is, it brings us out to that. Maybe a minor expansion of it, maybe not, but nonetheless, and, and again, run the property line down the middle. My look at the zoning bylaw said that in the R3, we need to have a three-foot setback between the property line and the driveway. Obviously, in this case, it would go to zero for both lots, but it would be two separate driveways instead of a shared driveway. It would meet the 10-foot minimum requirement. We wouldn't have the shared issue. The impact to the wetlands would be the least because you're developing the downstream highland side. And don't get me wrong, I really want to see this driveway fixed and corrected and the culverts addressed, because as I said, I live in fear with what's going on here right now that I'm going to get flooded out. But at least I think what I'm proposing is an alternative to a shared driveway, and it still would require a variance, I believe it's under 17547B1A. That's where the three-foot setback requirement is required. And the last page of what I've handed out to you is a couple of recent pictures of the driveway. The upper one is looking. The upper one is looking from Dale Street down, you can see the silt sock on either That's pretty wide already. I, I think an engineer's plan I was scaling from said it was eight or nine feet, that's, that's at least 12. And you can see there's area to the left of the driveway, that's where I'm proposing that it get expanded. Now, this also, I think, provides an asset to the applicant in that if he's planning on running a farm back there, having in common ownership, having a 20-foot wide driveway certainly is to his benefit, I would think, in bringing equipment back. When I first met him, it was within a week or so after he purchased it and he had a chainsaw in his hand and said, "I gotta make room for the concrete trucks." So, I mean, this is something that is in the forefront, is getting equipment in and out of there. So I think this is a more viable solution. And the second shot, the final shot, is taken from Oakland Road. I'm an abbotter on Oakland Road and I look after the interests of Bill Ginowitz, who is a landowner up on Oakland Road. In fact, Oakland Road is only frontage. And walking through there, I was able to snap this shot. Basically, once you get across the river, it's not a driveway, it's a parking lot. It's just wide open. So the impact of putting a double-wide driveway up, it's already there. There's no question, it's already there. So the biggest work would happen between Dale Street and the river in, in my concept. And I think it's a viable alternative. So I would ask that with that in mind, I'm, I'm an architect, not an engineer, but I think I know enough to propose something that, that's viable. Is it easy? No, there's still environmental issues to be solved with the conservation commission at, at a minimum. And of course, back to the planning board, hopefully soon, to deal with the stormwater bylaw. That, again, I reminded them recently that it's in violation, it has been for some time and it scares me. So that's my presentation, I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Anybody else need to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Erin Woods, I'm at 60 Dale Street. I've been there for 21 years now. I've never been in this room, more so now because of all the situation, which rightfully so, everyone has a right to buy property. I guess, I don't know all the laws, but I have to believe these owners knew about every single thing before they were buying the property. I know I did, the wetlands, the this, the that. So just, that's one thing that jumps out at me. And I can tell you for 21 years, that stream has gone over that little driveway that they call it a driveway. And I know Mr. McNagrely brought up even the fire department, that's another thing to think about when you're doing something like this for a driveway. So that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Amy, do you have any comments?
Um, no, I guess my only comment would be, in preparation for tonight, I did, I did review minutes from the conservation commission back in September and it was my, it's my understanding that they did determine that the river was intermittent, that it was an intermittent stream, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and that's been determined, so that's good for three years. And so it, it would appear to me that he would probably, or the owner would have a, a better chance getting, a better chance meeting the requirements of the, of the Wetland Protection Act because there's already a crossing there rather than trying to get a variance and prove, you know, to prove the three elements of a variance are very, very hard. So, that's just information that it is an, it's an intermittent stream, so it's not a perennial river, so we're not looking at a 200-foot setback right now.
So what does that mean? It makes it easier for him to cross it, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think that, and I think that, well, the intermittent stream means that it's not, it doesn't, you know, it's not subject to extended buffer zones. But I think it's the fact that there's already a crossing there that's utilized. So, you know, I think they would be expanding that crossing a little bit, but, but again, I'm not sure how much the conservation commission would determine that that is unlawful. I don't, I don't work with your conservation commission as much as I work with you guys. So it just seems that, that might be a more viable, working with you guys, I know how you are about variances, so it might be a more viable solution, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the fact that, oh, I don't know if it's fact that, oh, like, it's spoken about that it doesn't currently meet the stormwater standards we have. And so if they're going to add use to it, you'd think you'd have to require them to at least, even if they had a shared driveway to meet the current, current standards, in which case you'd be digging it up anyway.
I'm not sure that they ever could meet the, I don't think they could meet the, the existing standards with the current culvert that they have.
Right.
And I don't think they'd want to, I don't think the conservation commission would want them to rip up the culvert because that would be doing work directly in the resource area, which they, I think they're going to want to try and avoid.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what cement trucks were doing, but I don't, I don't see the road as being paved.
Passable.
It's not paved, right? Yeah. So from a, from a stormwater standpoint, if we, if we don't have the drainage, we want to keep it, we want to keep it impervious.
Do you have a comment there?
In terms of the stormwater, we're preparing a stormwater report in accordance with the town bylaws, we need to know what we're designing for. You know, if the driveway got widened or a second roadway got put in, that changes what we have to do. So we're waiting for the direction on this access before we can finalize the stormwater.
If they had a widened driveway, they'd think the property line runs down the middle, you'd have to give them a variance for the three-foot setback off the lot line, right?
Correct.
So basically, they're asking for a variance to use the existing driveway right now that we, they've pretty much proven that it floods and, and, I mean, it's not acceptable for now as it's being used right at this moment. And they want to add two houses back there using that same driveway the same way.
I thought it was just one house.
One house. There's one existing house.
One house and a barn.
One, oh, barn, that's what it was, barn.
Why does the barn have a septic system, just out of curiosity?
There, there's a toilet in the barn.
Okay. It just looked like a pretty large septic system.
Personally, I would feel better using something more towards Mr. Ulwick's suggestion than a shared driveway. Same, a variance for that, you know, for the three-foot setback versus a shared driveway.
Is the board more open to the waiving the three-foot setback from the property line for a driveway?
Personally, I would be that.
And basically having two driveways ablot each other?
Correct.
That's, that's the scenario we're talking about here.
Yeah, that's what, I would feel more comfortable with that, yes.
I don't know how Mr. Ulwick's concerns can, you know, if they have to, if they widen it, they're stuck, they're going to be working in the, in the street bed. So they, you know, would they be required then to come up to some standard for?
Not for, not for, for your, your board's purposes, but once they, if they decide to do the, do the widened driveway upon this board being okay with the three-foot variance, then they would have to design the driveway in accordance with however much they're disturbing, et cetera. So they might have to. I just don't know that for sure. Do you think you would have to?
There, there would be conservation, actually, we'd have to.
But what about stormwater? Do you have to improve the entire, do you have to improve the entire driveway?
Hmm.
With, because of the stormwater purposes, for drainage? Do you have to, do you have to include drainage and all that kind of stuff on the, on the accessway? I mean, it's only for a single family, it's only for, it would be for, so it would actually just be, it would be, each one would be for one single family.
Right.
So they would probably.
And one's going to be in compliance.
Yeah, so why, why are they subject to stormwater?
That's in, that's in the town bylaw.
Even single families, so do you?
That's in Abington, it's not a state thing, it's in Abington.
But you don't have to, oh, I'm thinking of, you're right, I'm thinking of the, the Wetland Protection Act stormwater standards. So they would, they would, that would be, that would be their responsibility, they would have to, they would have to meet the planning board requirements of, I was wondering why you were going to the planning board, so that's why, they would have to meet the planning board requirements of, of stormwater.
Is that something that you could potentially work on, is based on our input or?
Is for two shared driveways that directly ablot each other. You okay with that? We're okay with that.
So how would we proceed? Let them come back with a plan at some point?
Yeah, yeah, do you want to?
Amy, what about the septic? I mean, is that allowed in this town?
I'd have to look into that.
I mean, I mean, we were all forced to hook up to the storage many years ago, we were forced to. So why are they being allowed to, they should have a pump or whatever.
No, they have to cut through wetlands. So that's probably why.
I mean.
There might be.
That's a special, that's a special thing, I mean, we don't usually, you know, I mean, that's something that should be brought up too.
Have you been to the border health?
No. Good.
My name's Rick Montgomery, I live at 37 Horseshoe Lane and I'm the current owner of this property. The current house that's there is on a septic system, so there's been no pipe pulled through to that house. And the, we have already been perked through the health department and they've already engineered the plans and we already have the well and it is also permitted.
So the sewer line does not come down that road?
Not even close. But not, I'm, this is the, the proposed house, it's being built in seven and a half acres back.
Not close to the house that is original.
And then there's a lot of wetlands between us and that, what would be available to us. The impact would be huge.
Is the current house on a well?
It's, the current house is on town water, but it's on a sewer.
Nope, it's on a septic.
Sept, I'm sorry, septic, yes, yes.
So you can't get a water line back there either because of the wetlands, is that the case or?
We already have a well.
Right. But did you try, is it because of this, is it because of the wetlands?
When we purchased the property, I believe it was a moratorium.
Oh, okay.
On water. And so we just moved forward and went ahead and had a well put in.
Okay.
So if you were to design this, how long would it take you to come back to us with a, a plan?
I know we've looked at the previous owner before, Rick. There was some concepts floating around, so there's probably a head start, we wouldn't be starting from scratch.
So I'm just thinking of as far as a date for you to come back, January or February or?
When would it need to be submitted for the January meeting would be my question.
Well, we'd continue this, right? Would they have to start fresh?
You're asking for a variance from a different section.
That's true. So I guess you could withdraw this one without prejudice, just in case you want.
Attorney Riley has something to say.
No.
He raised his hand. Oh, did you close it?
No, we didn't, nobody closed it, no.
Just him, no.
I didn't even see him wave his hand.
Thank you, Chairman Questle.
I think it's because I'm the only one that can see him.
Yeah, you're right.
Because he's right in my line of sight.
So I, I just wanted to clarify something Mr. McNagrely said, just for the views at home. No one, since Abington brought sewer to town, we're not required to connect a sewer. Certain neighborhoods, I think.
We were, I know I was.
Yeah, your neighborhood had significant problems in that part of town, so they couldn't perk. So if your property can perk, you have the option to go septic or to connect. And usually it's a cost benefit. Running a 700-foot-long pipe, cheaper than putting in a septic system, that's the, I just want to clarify that.
Well, that's good, thank you.
And as far as, never mind, I'm going to shut up.
No, no.
Well, I was only going to suggest, just to help everyone move along, there's a petition here for, I think it's a variance for common driveway and.
It's under section 14.
Right, and you're talking now about a variance to the, the three-foot setback.
45, yeah.
Yeah, and there is some case law, as you know, the, the purpose of the notice is to put the neighbors on, on notice about what you're talking about and what's going to, what you're asking for relief. And they're asking for a common driveway. There's an argument and it's up to the board's discretion to say that granting the variance on the other section is still under the same category of designing this driveway, which is why the neighbors are here. You hear about designing the driveway. You could say, no, and we want you to publicize and tell them what they already know and come back and do it again. It's your choice, but I think you have the option. That's all.
Personally, Sean, I'm going to rely on what town council.
That's right.
I would suggest to do that, I would rely.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion.
I know she did, wow.
No, he's, he's right about the, ooh, I can't believe I said that. He's right about, it's on TV. He's right about the DuToe case. I, I mean, yeah, I guess that would be up to the board, honestly, I think it's, I do think that the neighbors have been put on notice about a driveway, this is just a wider driveway. It's probably fine.
Okay, I should say so.
So he would bring another plan in.
So we don't have to, you don't have to go through the whole process again?
So it'd be, the continuance to January.
If that's enough time for you, is that going to be enough time for you?
When would you need a revised plan to review prior to that meeting?
We'd want at least seven days in advance.
So a week. So when's the next meeting?
The next meeting is January 13.
January 13.
The deadline for all the info is next Thursday.
But that's the 30-day notice.
That's for a new petition.
Yeah, that's for a new petition, so, yeah, he's just going to submit stuff.
So we're talking January 6.
Yeah.
January 6 for any new, any updated material.
So I give you enough time?
That's sufficient, yes.
And you're going to be okay with the stormwater or do you want to run that? I'm just looking at it. Do you want to make sure that you can comply?
That we'd have, that's another issue with conservation.
And planning, right?
Planning is, planning's concern was the access. Which, this is, this is all based off, this is the A and R, we're just trying to get the A and R approved.
You haven't gotten your A and R approved yet?
No, this is, all has to do about the A and R.
Okay. I opined on that months ago.
The site, the, the site plan and the formal site plan with the, the proposed house, the, the grading and the stormwater.
July.
That will, that will, that, because the A and R is still going on, that will run parallel.
So that's actually good because now you can change the lot line.
Correct.
Okay, so that's good, okay.
We will have to modify the A and R.
Yes, you will, okay. So works in your benefit.
So the, so the variance, the A and R plan and the site plan with the stormwater are all, would all run concurrently and we'd have to update the notice of intent as well.
Okay.
But the purpose of coming back here.
Is to get the variance for the three.
Right, but that, that January date is okay with you?
Yeah.
So you don't have an order of conditions yet?
It's, they approved the location of the house and that, the pedestrian bridge that we then presented the planning board pending stormwater management design, which we hadn't been able to resolve because we're still resolving the access issue.
So in September, when they determined that it was intermittent, that was, that meeting was continued, you didn't get it, there was no, or did they just make that determination?
No, that determination was made previous to that September meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Ulwick? Yes, please.
I think, yeah, it sounds like it'll work. You're all the stuff you have to do.
Point of information and also some additional information, town council had weighed in about the A and R and it was discovered that the driveway, the access, the vehicular access to the site was considered illusory, that the notion of putting a parking lot on Dale Street and then a footbridge and several hundred feet to the house wouldn't work. I mean, how, how do you do a Title V inspection? You're not going to get equipment there. You, you really needed access. So that's when they, they came here. The other point of information I'd like, clearly this involves conservation commission, before you guys approve it, does ConCom have to approve it or do you make it subject to ConCom approving it? Would be my question, just in terms of order of how these things get done.
Well, conservation is a separate board. If whatever rules and regulations they have, they'd have to comply with those.
But.
Somebody has to take the.
If they wouldn't approve a driveway, then where are we? If they wouldn't approve expansion of, of the width of the driveway, where are we?
That was going to be my, one of my next questions.
Yeah. I mean, shouldn't it require ConCom first?
That's up to them, that's up to them.
That's exactly, that's what my point is.
Well, that's as soon as.
The other petition is they have to go and choose whichever way they want to go.
As soon as it's, as soon as it's updated, the driveway's updated and the impacts and the update, and the notice of intent is updated, we immediately send it to conservation.
But you can't, wait a second, you can't, you guys can't make a decision based on a plan that's not, that's, that's not approved. It's an, if the, the A and R plan has to be approved first. You don't have to record it, they have to, but it has to be approved. And then, I mean, you could change it if you had to, but you're, you're making a decision based on Lot 1 and Lot 2 that don't exist.
Right, that's right.
You can't do that.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Have a good one.
So which town, which board?
He leaves when it gets tough.
Yeah.
Which board needs to make the decision first?
You, you cannot, you cannot come to this board and ask for a variance for Lot 1 or Lot 2 without Lot 1 and Lot 2 existing.
Yeah, because we don't know if they exist.
So, yeah, the A and R, and, and so the A and R was the same issue that, that, the A and R was, the issue with the A and R was Section 14. Which you asked for the variance from. So if you, if you do the, the two vari, the two driveways, you will have access to both lots.
Correct.
And that's all that the planning board has to look at when they look at an A and R. So, um, but they won't, they don't have to determine if the three feet is necessary or not. They just have to make sure that they're safe and adequate access. So, so you, you want to go to, you want to get these lots established before you come back here?
So withdraw.
So I would get the A and R done.
First. We could continue.
Continue, yeah, just continue.
We can continue with her.
They won't, they shouldn't send you here, they sent you here because, I don't know why they sent you here. I, I apologize that I wasn't part of that. I did issue an opinion to them stating that the access is illusory to Lot 1, right? With this plan, because there is no access to Lot 1 and you cannot access Lot 1 through Lot 2 under the zoning bylaw. But if you come in, if you go in with the shit with the driveway next to each other, you're, you'll have a separate access for Lot 1 and a separate access for Lot 2. One, one half of the driveway, the other half of the driveway, two driveways, they're just, they just happen to be.
Side by side.
Side by side. So, so that, and, and they were correct to send you, to send you here to see about the variance, but I still not sure you guys could have actually, you could have said, okay, we're okay with it. You could have gone back, got your A and R and then come back, but, um.
Either way, they'd be coming back.
Yeah, you're better off, you're, yeah. If you get the A and R, then you have two separate, then you have two lots that they can act on.
We can submit the A and R plan showing the two separate lots, we'll adjust the property line and indicate.
Yep.
A future 20-foot-by-driveway that will service both lots.
Yep, and, and you don't have to, um, you don't have to advertise or anything for an A and R, you just, you just deliver it.
Give them the notice.
No, they gonna be doing over the bridge? Are they actually gonna put a bridge in or?
That depends on Conservation.
Okay, and, uh, is it gonna be asphalted?
I would assume no.
No?
So it doesn't sound as though January would be the time for you to come back. All right, are you gonna be able to?
When is the planning board meeting, January, January 6th?
They may before we do.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, you can do it. You, if you, we'll put you on and if you're not ready, then we could always continue it for another month if you have to.
It's on schedule.
No, no, I'm talking about here.
Planning was on schedule.
I understand.
Yeah, we've been, we've been continued to the January planning.
Okay.
So we're already on the agenda.
All right, so there, okay. So, so you want to agree to a continuance until?
We'll do the January 13th and if something happens at the planning board meeting, we'll ask for a second.
Can you just sign this and?
Do you need the applicant to sign it or for me to sign it?
Uh, the applicant, yeah.
We're gonna vote on that?
Yep, we need to take a vote on it. Somebody want to make a motion to continue it to January 13th?
I gotta find it. All right, here we go. I move that we continue consideration of the petition of Rick Montgomery, 37 Orchard Lane for a variance under 175-14 to utilize an existing driveway as a common driveway to all access to both the existing and proposed dwellings or 75 Dale Street. Property is located on Assessor's Map 586364 lot. 14 and 122 through 127 and 2 and 3 in the R30 zone as signed by Andrew, the chairman, Zone Board of Appeals. And, can we say anything about our expectation that they're gonna come back with something different than this?
No, I don't think we need to do that.
Okay, we just continue it and they can just come back and then modify.
January 13th.
Modify plan.
What time, 7:05? 7:05.
Okay.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
No problem, though. I sure think this is yours.
Oh, yeah, but it's written up. I took it. Yeah, it's written up. I have mine.
That happens all the time, Mark. I won't try to put mine in the plan.
Next is petition of point at Abington 12 Forsyth Drive. Town of Abington's zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 9th, 2021 at 7:20 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington. On the petition of point at Abington 12 Forsyth Drive for a waiver under Section 175-58.3 for two entrance signs on stone and one double-sided leasing sign to replace the existing sign. The property is located on Assessor's Map 23, Lot 23 in the TC zone. Andrew Irvine, chairman, Zone Board of Appeals. Sorry to make you wait.
It's all right. Good evening. My name is Bridget Bates. I'm the property manager for the Point at Abington, um, located at 12 Forsyth Drive. We're asking to essentially just replace the existing signage from the old owner, sorry, the previous owner, their branding to the Point at Abington branding.
Nothing else is changing? The size stays the same, the?
Everything's the same.
Any questions?
No, it's all gonna be the same, so no difference in lighting or anything like that?
No, sir, not at this time.
Anybody in the, uh, the public want to speak on this? If not, we'll bring it back to the board. This will be Bob, Rick and me.
I don't have any further discussion or questions.
No, it's, uh, it's an existing scientist changing it over from one.
Yes, sir.
So you want to make a, a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the petition of point at Abington 12 Forsyth Drive for a waiver under 175-58.3 for two entrance signs on stone and one double-sided leasing sign to replace the existing sign. Property is located on Assessor's Map 23, Lot 23 in the TC, TC zone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anybody's happy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry again to make you wait.
No worries. I learned a lot tonight.
Yeah. So these last two are continued from last month.
Right.
Which I was not here, so I'm gonna have the three of you, because you guys sat in on, right, all of those, so.
All right, uh, the Town of Abington's Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, excuse me. The original hearing was November 18th, 2021, and it was continued to tonight, December 9th, 2021 at the Abington, Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington. On the petition of Patrick Sullivan, 46 Daniel Drive in Abington for a side yard variance under 175-29 for construction of an addition at 46 Daniel Drive. The property is located on Assessor's Map, 21 lot, 41 in R40 zone. Andrew Irvine, chairman. The petition, identify yourself and?
I'm Patrick Sullivan. I'm the owner of the house 416 Daniel Drive. And, uh, I'm just here to submit, um, additional views the board requested.
Yeah, that's a lot better. We can see exactly what the house is gonna look like. You requested it. Yes, I did, just so we can see the height and, you know, to see what it would look like at the end. Because we want to have something that would, you know, look ugly. Yeah, and that looks pretty good. It looks very good. I think we had questions about the old fans had a bathroom in it or something like that?
Yeah, those drawings were done for teacher down the line, just so I didn't have to pay another fee to get brand new drawings done to be upstairs.
Okay, but just like, you know, if it does get approved, we're not approving?
Right, it's a whole separate.
Right.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for him?
Let me just look up the old one. Daniel, right?
Yep.
You can bring this. Another sort of variance. And I think we looked at the house and it.
A little bit of a touch.
Yeah, right, remember it was kind of.
Offset.
Offset angled, at a weird angle. And that's the reason why.
They need the variance.
We're looking at the variance. Side yard variance. I don't have, do you have the, the original one, the original?
I thought we had all the plans already here. I just brought the additional view.
And this is the.
Oh, there it is, yeah, great.
Oh, the plot plan I do have.
Yes.
What is the setback, the current, the side setback is? Looks like that.
Right, and the house is, uh, it's not, it's not square. It's offside, yeah.
It looks straight.
Yeah.
24.5 and 24.
Right, right, and that's.
That's the whole action.
And that was the variance we were talking about.
Side yard variance, right.
Right here because of the house is not.
Square.
Square.
To the property.
To the property.
Right. All right, any questions? Any other discussion here? Would anyone else from the audience like to speak on this issue? Apparently not. Um, so we have a motion to close the public discussion.
Motion to close the public discussion.
Do you have anything, Amy, on this one?
I don't. I don't. I'm just looking up something. Nope, I don't.
And you have a second?
Hold on a second. And there was nothing from the, nothing.
Nope.
All right. So does anyone want to make a motion?
You have to have a second and then close.
Second.
Uh, in favor of closing the discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? No, I, I like to say aye as well.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Um, board discussion. Plan looks great.
Yeah.
Glad that, glad that we got the plans. If we got the plans ahead, we would have done it last month.
Right, we, that was, uh, like we said, that the house is not square with, with the land. And Eric, there's a good variance.
I'm ready. Uh, on the petition for Patrick Sullivan, 416 Daniel Drive, Abington, for a side yard variance under 175-29 for construction of an addition at 416 Daniel Drive. The property is located on Assessor's Map 21, Lot 41 in the R40 zone. I vote that we approve this petition.
Second. All in, any more discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you, Mike.
Best wishes.
Just remember you have to, when you're done with the construction, then you have to talk to the building inspector. Uh, write something every year. Every year they have to, um.
That's, that's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Oh, okay.
I don't think this is an.
This is just.
This isn't a long, just a stretch.
It's a long night.
This is it. The next, uh, issue will be the continued hearing.
Oh, Orchard.
On Orchard Lane, I'll read that. The Town of Abington's Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on, or we did hold one on Thursday, November 18th, and it was continued until tonight, December 9th, um, 2021 at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood's Way, Abington. On the petition of backyard AD use for Joseph Casey, 209 Orchard Lane, Abington, for a special permit under 17532-I for in-law apartment at 209 Orchard Lane. The property is located on Assessor's Map, 37 Lot 48 in the R30 zone. Signed by Andrew Irvine, chairman. And just let us know who you are. You were here last time.
My name's Tim O'Reilly. Uh, I work for Backyard AD Use and I'm here on behalf of Joseph Casey, uh, resident at 209 Orchard Lane. I want to thank the board for this long night. Thank you for having us here again. If you weren't here last time, if you'd like, I'd be happy to go over, um, how this project is in the spirit of 17532-I. But I want to focus first on our, our new design here. So the area we're gonna be talking about here is highlighted in blue. Uh, again, our goal, according to recommendation of the board, is to attach our two structures here. So going back to the drawing board here, um, and again, our goal is to have, uh, these two structures attached. So we've extended this roof line, uh, which would be attached to the primary residence here. It'll create, um, a nice covered walkway here, uh, for Joe's mother, um, so that, uh, as she's entering and exiting her, her apartment, uh, she'll have some coverage and that these two structures are attached. Um, the reason we went with this, uh, this roof line here, I'll open up the, another view here as well. So to see, um, how these two are together. Uh, the reason we went with this design, uh, is thinking about making this project feasible in the spirit of this bylaw. Joe's mother is, is elderly, um, and, uh, the reason this project is moving forward is so that she can age in place and be cared for by her family. Um, we looked into physically attaching, um, these two walls here, uh, but we start, uh, removing windows on two stories, um, a basement as well. Um, and it starts to make this kind of project not feasible. So, um, this is why, uh, we, we went with, uh, this attached roof structure. Uh, we haven't modified the footprint, so we, in terms of thinking about the site and any impacts, um, beyond that, uh, we feel that we're still, again, uh, in that spirit of 17532-I.
So now it's more like the picture right here that you have?
Exactly.
Okay.
Which is what you pointed out.
Yeah, see that? Yeah, this is, this is what we were going for.
Right.
Right there.
Yeah.
Excepting, except, isn't there like a walk, a walkway through the?
Yeah, so that, that angle, I, it doesn't do a great job of seeing that, um, this cross section here. So there is gonna be this walkway here, so, um, but again, those two structures will be attached. Um, and so that'll allow, you know, Joe and his mother.
Will you actually see that? Could you take that down and bring it over here?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They submitted.
I just want to see, I just want to see.
Did you run this by the building inspector?
Um, I, I did. I gave them a call, um, a couple of days ago. And I started to go.
See a little bigger, so.
I started to go through the situation and they said that, uh, I shouldn't talk to them. I should come here tonight.
Which is what you pointed out, but that's.
Yeah.
So now.
Just wanted to see the bigger picture.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
In order to get from more living space to living space, that, if they went from the, the main part of the house to this part of the house now that it's connected.
Yep.
Should we have to go outside for a short distance?
Um, should be able to go from.
On the deck.
The pool will be on the deck. Should be able to walk this line up.
Right, okay.
Does the, um, may I?
Yes, you can.
Does the accessory building exist?
Currently?
Yeah.
Here, let me show you this.
I wasn't able to explain.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I have to explain. Uh, so currently there is a, a deck with a pool.
Uh huh.
And so this does not exist.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this is what we're proposing.
Where's the front of the house, right here?
Yep, here's the front and here's Orchard Lane.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, um, I guess one of the concerns was, um.
It was, it was an individual structure not connected to the house last time they put the.
Right, and also preservation of single-family characteristics.
Mm-hmm.
Shall not change, um, the single-family characteristic of the dwelling. So, um, I, I don't, you guys are good with the fact that when you're looking at this dwelling, it's not gonna change, right? Yeah, okay. And then, and then she also flagged number 7, which says, there shall be no more than one accessory apartment. Is there, is there another one?
No, it's a single-family home.
Okay.
Yep.
That might just be an error, a typo or something, okay.
Was she trying to remind us to, remind them to get the annual thing for?
Maybe, yeah, maybe, I don't know.
We're aware that they need to make a declaration.
Every year.
Of covenants with the registry, and then yearly with the building department, let them know who's, who's that in there, and that it must be a family.
So it sounds like the, oh, first of all, we should probably close the discussion from the public. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add to the discussion from the, from the floor, so to speak? Motion to close the discussion from? Motion to close the discussion.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Board discussion?
No, I just think, I think they've met what we've asked to do. Again, we don't like to see separate buildings.
They're not supposed to allow it. Right. This way they won't lose any of their current living space windows or anything else.
Right. And project looks good, it's an in-law, so.
Is there gonna be any, like, settling differences between the kind of footings you have under the in-law and the house itself?
Yeah, let me see. So are we do an ICF foundation, a shallow frost protected, so given this, there'll be a, our reveal here will be less than the current house foundation, but the actual finished look will look the same.
Are we just getting at the, you know, the shallow footing, whether that's gonna?
No, it'll, it'll look like, it's ICF forms, so we're gonna have to rope here, so no, it'll look the same as, it's, we're bringing it up to match the height of the deck.
So I guess I'm not, didn't like concern correctly, I guess my concern was whether the, just having the roof connection, whether the, this building addition would move up and down more than the house. Or is that shallow foundations not gonna move?
Yeah, it's not gonna move.
I think he's talking.
No, yeah, it's, it's still a concrete foundation, the shallow part is we're just not digging super deep. Provide horizontal insulation, so that we don't have to dig as deep to prevent frost in that foundation.
Any questions or discussion on the board? I'm good. You're good. Do we have a motion? Do you want to go?
No, you go.
On the motion from the petition of backyard ADU for Joseph Casey, 209 Orchard Lane, Abington, for a special permit under 175-32-I, for an in-law apartment at 209 Orchard Lane, the proposed location of Assessors Map 37, Lot 48, in the R 30 zone, I put motion that we approve with the notification of an annual notification to the building board of the use of the property. Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks for having us back.
Happy to have you back, thank you for doing what you did.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to go back to the item we put it to the end briefly, because Amy's here, and she might be an expert, she can get these quickly, that standalone battery energy store that? Is this, you know the planning board is working on?
Yeah, did they give you anything?
We gave them here.
What you had said.
Yeah, what I.
They asked for our input, but.
Oh.
I kind of rely on you and them.
Good luck.
To write the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, so it's, it's a new thing, a lot of cities and towns are looking into, into this. The problem is, is that we don't necessarily have excellent definitions. For example, one of my municipalities decided to put that, allow them anywhere, and it's caused a lot of problems. So the first thing, I guess the, I guess that the, you know, maybe a comment back to the planning board would be that you would need to see a definite definition, a very.
Now, what type of, what type of battery storage you're talking about? Now, I know in Braintree, they have, the Belt Light has a huge building.
Yeah.
With batteries.
Yeah.
All in them, as backup, is that what we're talking about here?
Um, yeah, not that, not to that, not usually to that size, but a lot of them.
It's a storage type of, I would say, a cargo type of storage unit, filled with batteries as a backup.
Yeah.
Is that something we're worried about?
Yeah, this is because, yeah, these batteries will take energy from the grid and store it.
Right. Is this for home use and commercial use?
It's mostly just commercial use. I, I don't know, because they haven't defined it.
Because Generac just came out with.
Yeah.
The, the new Tesla batteries, that they hang on the walls in the house, and there's, there's already been questions about whether or not it's appropriate to put them in the cell.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's a serious problem for firefighting.
It's huge.
Battery, battery storage with.
Normally it's in 10 feet of the electrical panel.
That's what this is about, just where to store these batteries?
No, it's, 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 they're standalone battery storage, so it would be, like Rich was saying, a building.
Well, like a, like a storage container that comes off a ship.
Yeah.
They're that size, and they're full of batteries, and in Braintree, I went to go take a look at one of them, and it's monitored 24 hours by.
And where do they store them?
They're storing for backup, because if something, something happens, they can use that energy to, to run their grid or something for a short time. And also, they're selling it back.
So, yeah.
So you want to limit the places where they're, where I would imagine, right?
I would.
There's no, like, building safety standards for these, right?
So, yeah, they, they, they're, if they hit a certain size, they have to be permitted through the Energy Facility Siting Board, the EFSB, that they, they permit power plants. So, but a lot of times, they're on the edge of a solar field, of a large solar array. They're with, like, Belt has one, you know, Belt would have one, all the power plants will have, will have them.
So you, are you working with the planning board to help them develop the bylaw for this, or?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I, I, I help them.
She's not reading bylaw history, but she's very good.
I help them by saying that they need to tell me what they want, and then I will tell them how we, how we get it done.
So how about we punt it back to the planning board and say?
Sure.
We have a lot of faith in Amy coming up with a great draft.
I do tell them not to do what the, what one community's doing.
And maybe some towns can help you out too, I mean, like, Belt, I mean, they have, they do have one.
I have one municipality that put a moratorium on it, so to, so they could get their arm, like, get their arms wrapped around it.
Right, so you don't want them everywhere, because that could be an issue.
Yeah.
Even for homeowners, after the last couple of audits we've had here in Abington, people, you know, like, solar panels, they would like to have battery storage so they can, you know, have at least a little bit of power for.
We're lucky, we don't see too many of them in residential, as firefighters, we're very lucky we don't see that, but in rural areas, they have them, and, yeah, there are a handful, because, I mean, I've seen articles on basements full of batteries that are just sitting there.
Well, in Duxbury, just, just so you know, out in the peninsula, all those houses have batteries, and they're all solar, and you'd be surprised how they keep them. Some of them are not really in protected conditions, and some of them are in barns and stuff like that, and the barn is older than the house.
Yeah.
And they have, you know, 17 or 18 batteries with jumper cables on them going back and forth, and a spark away from having a disaster. And then you have these new Tesla batteries that are coming out, which GenRec and I think Kohler are both utilizing, they look like little misolet things that mount on the wall of your cellar, and they're generally within 10 feet of your electrical panel. And there is no regulation right now saying they shouldn't be there, because, you know, because nothing, there's nothing out there. But I also want to say that both of those companies are 300% more aggressive today than they were five years ago, with getting more and more people to jump on the solar bandwagon as opposed to using gas, propane, or other means to maintain their generators. So this is becoming even more a residential problem with coming down the road in the future. I already know of six people this year that have done it in the state, in different parts of the state. So it's happening more and more in the residential environment, as much as it is for cities and towns to buy these commercial, like you said, landlocked structures that they could stand on a piece of land anywhere they want.
And that's like what they have, break, it's set off aside.
You know, it's in the parking lot, next to the power lot.
It's, it's, it's way down, yeah.
So, and they can be anywhere, because they can, they can make them like two eyes